Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Gordon O'Connell, D.C. County Attorney General, County Attorney General, and Deputy Harless Commissioner. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular session of Lincoln County Commission meeting that was held on June 1st, 2017 at 6:00 p.m.
I'll second that.
I'll second that. Oh, yes. Next, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the special session of Lincoln County Commission meeting that was held on June 26th, 2017 at 6:00 p.m.
I'll second that.
I'll second that. Oh, yes?
Yes.
Okay, first, on the public comment, Ginny Vance, Terry Halstead, and Brittany Zelker.
They called down the day they were not coming.
Okay.
Oh, that was the next one I just thought you wanted to say.
Oh, yeah. Well, I just wanted, we were, we want to let the public know that Allen Sharp was reappointed to the Solid Waste Authority effective July 1st, 2017 by the DEP Cabinet Secretary Austin Caperton. On the public comment, first, we have, pardon comments?
Well, we're kind of talking to Rick.
Okay, okay.
We're just going to let him talk and...
Okay, that'll be fine. Next chat story, Congressman Jacobson's office.
Just wanted to tell you that we had, we have a level of support for your base to application of a small city's block grant.
Thanks. You're welcome. Congressman Jacobson, we appreciate it. Yes, sir. Allen, if you want to speak.
I just wanted to take the opportunity to give the commission an update on a couple of projects that we have been working on, and some of those, there may be members here tonight that are interested. The mitigation project that we've been working on now for several months has been completed. It has been filed with the state, and we're done with our part until we find out that we are approved or denied for the grant. There was a total of 50 structures that was included in the grant, give or take, a few because some of them were combined into one structure. There were actually multiple structures on the same piece of property or whatever. That's why I use the term approximately 50 structures for the grant. Most of them were all valued at under $50,000 a piece, and total projects was, if we received the money, will be between $4.5 and $5 million. And that includes purchasing the locations, demolishing the locations, and then returning the ground back to a grassy area afterwards, and then any administrative costs that we would incur as part of that. I don't expect us to find anything out for six months on the approval process. This isn't anything that happens quickly. There were, at last count, about $55 million available for this project statewide, and there was about $75 million in applications statewide. Because we knew that there would be so many applications, we actually did seven different, separate projects. The first project was the group of people that met with us in Griffithsville. The first project were people that got flooded multiple times, and then based upon location and priority and likelihood of being approved, we did six more projects. We felt like if we had a project that was approved, it would be better to have an entire community, or an entire block, or an entire area cleaned up versus hodgepodgeing it across the county. So there was a total of six additional projects after the first one. The reimbursement has been submitted for the cost of the appraisals for projects two through six. Projects two through six, time had, that time had passed from our first project to two through six, or two through seven, that they allowed for a different procedure. So we have not paid the appraisal company for anything, anything for those appraisals. We have submitted the documentation for reimbursement. We should have received reimbursement prior to the commission having to pay the bill. The appraisal company is well aware of that, and they are, they understand they're not going to get the money until we get the money. So it shouldn't have any undue burden on the commission. Any questions on the mitigation?
There was 12 in the first project, is that right?
That's pretty close.
So those appraisals are the ones that we...
Those are the appraisals that we initially paid for. And I think we were somewhere in the neighborhood of $300 a piece is what the appraisals cost. So we also plan to submit some time for our employees and our staff that put together the application for projects two through seven, where we can actually recoup some of the cost of hours worked and expenses. We've basically divided our office into three different departments now. When you all get the payroll, the payroll's all the same, but as far as record-keeping and time-keeping, what project we're working on and what function we're working on, we're charging it out within our own accounting system, so we know who, who to ask for money for and where it goes to when, once it comes back.
That question, who determines if you get the money? Who's making that determination?
The actual determination, I think, is made by the West Virginia Office of Emergency Management, based upon criteria that they have.
So it's Penix and that those guys?
Absolutely. Brian's the one.
Thank you.
And if you've, and if you show desire to call Mr. Penix, or have someone else call Mr. Penix, and write a letter in support for our mitigation plan, we will not object to it. It would definitely help. There's a percentage of money that's already designated by FEMA based upon the total loss in the last floods. So that's where the 50 or 55 million dollars come into play, and then all of the counties are basically competing for it. Our first application was the first one turned in in the state, and then it got to the point that you couldn't get through the door up there for the amount of applications. But last I heard, there was about $75 million in applications for $55 million of money. Do I think we'll get all of our, all seven projects funded? No, being realistic. Do I think we'll get several of them funded? Yes, I do. And that's why we prioritize them the worst first, and then, and then from there. But all of these people have been flooded multiple times, time and time again, and the amount of savings to the local residents, as well as FEMA, will be tremendous if we do get this approved. No other questions on that? The 911 Center was struck by lightning approximately three weeks ago. We're still working on figuring out the total damages on that, but we're saying somewhere between $15,000 and $20,000. We didn't get knocked off the air completely. We did have several pieces of equipment damaged, and we did have a loss of service. It took us about a week to get everything restored, back to where it was prior to the lightning damage. But, you know, when you run a communications facility and you build lightning, rods wrecked the silage or a tower, that's part of, that's part of what happens. But we've pulled up the standards for grounding, and we are meeting or exceeding, and doing everything we can to even enhance that maybe a little bit more, but we're functioning. As far as the cellular projects, you know, we're working on several of those. The project at Salt Rock is nearing an end. I've had several people say, "Well, why in the world you build a tower in Campbell County?" Well, you have to have the middle mile built. You can have all the most beautiful, wonderful towers in Lincoln County, but if they can't get the signal out of Huntington to here because of the hills in between us, we're not going to get coverage. We were approached initially by one of the cellular carriers that they had a need in that area, and there was nothing in that area. We had a need in that area with microwave from the 911 Center into the Salt Rock Tower. So since that tower has been available since early spring, we've signed two contracts with two carriers. One is Shittail, which also markets as Sprint in this valley. Because of that, they have turned three towers on in the Hamlin area, one in Hamlin and two in West Hamlin. That's actually directly microwave-linked through that tower. So it was needed, that tower was critically needed. Since that time, we've also signed an agreement with King Street Wireless. King Street Wireless, I don't think, has any immediate plans to provide any additional service in the area, but King Street Wireless is a subsidiary owned by U.S. Cellular Corporation. So you're not probably going to see anything right now, but I think you can read between the lines. If U.S. Cellular owns them, there's, they're planning on doing something. At this point, I'm not 100% sure. And we're currently in negotiation right now for a third carrier, and I can't really reveal who they are, but I can tell you that it is a carrier that previously, previously has not had any service in this area. So we're not seeing further expansion of AT&amp;T, but we're seeing a lot more players come to the table and a lot more competition here, which will drive the market and will increase the service. We fielded several more calls this week from other areas of the county with interest in cellphone service, and like I tell everybody that calls me, if your company needs a cellphone tower in this county, you show me on the map where you want it to be, we'll find it. We, as a county, will build it, and we will make it available to you. And so far, several of them are, are still looking at where they want that service to be. But we're, it seems like every week we do something with the cellular industry. We received radios for the police departments across the county, and all of those radios are encrypted. Those radios primarily for the Sheriff's Department and their two municipalities. That will allow them to be completely scrambled or completely encrypted. We found that in this day and time, there's too much sometimes said on police radio that the people that we're trying to protect, and with, especially with the drug trafficking throughout Southern West Virginia, that some things need to be said in private. So this will allow them to go completely private, and that will free up some additional radios that we've got within our office that has come through grants. So if you've got any other county vehicles, whether it be the Assessor's Office, or Darrell, or I don't care who it is, if somebody under the county umbrella that needs a radio for field use, get with me and let me know, and we can work to get them a radio in their vehicle. And that way, we would provide for some better coverage for those offices and better management of some resources, I think.
It was a big, after that last election?
We got Darrell a half a dozen radios during the last election, and...
Yeah, we have some precincts that's hard to get in touch with, and just phones being locked in offices or whatever it may be. We use those digital radios that Allen wants to use, and we got numbers in quicker. We, you know, it was, it was a good deal.
Well, consider it from this point forward. You need them, they're there, and if they're not in our office, we'll ask for the resources elsewhere, and don't bring them in for us, and you can use them. But if you've got vehicles in your office, I don't know if you have any, you've got one, if you'd like that, and we could probably put you even a base in your office and come up with a government channel where you all could talk to all the vehicles within the county realm. And, you know, sometimes when you get out in the field and you have another call that comes in and it's in the same area or something else you need to check on, it's a whole lot easier if you can get a hold of your people to, to not be backtracking on your services.
Yeah, maybe one channel for the, for the, all the county, like the Assessor's Office and the county, just the county vehicles.
Well, the Assessor's Office and their office and whatever. But those, we will have additional radios that are, that are owned by the county that can go to some of those other vehicles.
Nothing wrong with communications.
It's key to success. Yes, sir.
Allen, I'm thinking, we met with ADP a few weeks ago. They're going to upgrade the Sherden substation over the electric over there. They're also, they're looking at putting some big lines in, better lines to replace the one going into Huntington from over in the branch, in the Big Kip area. And I talked with them about because they're going to be having to access those places we're putting the, the electric lines or the towers that they put in it, about letting us use some of the access rates. We had areas that we needed to put a tower at to use their access roads and things like that.
Great, great.
But I'll let you know when I hear any more from them, because they're not getting into that stage until they finish the upgrade of the Sherden substation. So there's a whole idiot in there, a redundant loop in there, so that they can run it out of Logan or Chaplinsville or Huntington there or so. But they should be, it may save us some money if we can find places that coincide, because they really haven't decided their route and things like that.
So is it going to be a high-tension tower?
Yeah.
Well, you know, there's even some places, and there's a place right beside the interstate. Next time you're down near, cross lanes on the dog track, if you look on the opposite side of the road of the dog track, they've got a high-tension line, but it's covered with cellular antennas. So they sometimes will put...
They had mentioned that too, that sometimes they allow, you know, do that. So when they decide, when they go ahead with this project, I'll have them get a hold of you and say, "We'll coordinate something with them."
Please. And the lady that you and I talked about, or got a message through, we're, we're still looking at her property, and we've got it on the list, and it's one of those areas that if one of the carriers tells us they need something in that area, then, then we're good. The legislature had talked about doing away with that fund that was used to build tower sites within West Virginia during this last budget, and they didn't do it. We were glad they didn't, because there have been 24 towers built in the state through that project. Four of them were in our county, so we've done well with, with the money, so I would like to see that kept in place. So it really has allowed the counties to build some robust towers that otherwise we couldn't afford it. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, was, is there anyone else that didn't, that not on your agenda wanted to speak?
On the water project, Lower Mud River, the coach sent letters out. What have you gotten received?
Well, I'll tell you what, we're going to that right next year. Let Rick talk, and you can direct that to him. Mr. Roberts, you want to speak about the Lower Mud River project?
Yeah, as, I believe I've sent out emails and stuff, the HUD issue about crossing the streams, they've, I guess, discussed that issue with FEMA and decided that it's not really an issue at all, and we can't cross the streams with directional boards. So that problem, which, to be quite honest with you, I was concerned about, has went away, so that's out of the way. We have all the permits in place. We have, by the end of next week, we'll have 80% of the easements in hand. The Public Service Commission was, application was filed in April, and ALJ's order is due at the, by the end, by or before the end of August, and it'll be final 20 days after the ALJ Administrative Law Judge issues. We're working right now to get all the paperwork into the funding agencies for authorization to bid. The district, like the gentleman said, has sent out letters. Those letters were addressed to the people that had signed user agreements, and we've been getting easement agreements over the last several months, and I believe that a letter should have went out to everybody that signed a user agreement. So if you didn't get one...
Me or my daughter even?
You should call the district office to find out. Did you sign a user agreement?
Yes, sir, come to my house.
Okay. It could be that, I don't know, maybe the address is wrong or something, but, but they had the list, and I believe they sent one out to everybody that was on the list.
Most everybody.
If I may, I'm the officer, so call me tomorrow, and if I have your letters.
Okay.
If my office will know.
Thank you.
How many more easements you got?
We've got 35 of 43. Three of those, we had to do some additional research on, because they had switched hands, and I have those now. We'll be going back out and get those. Three of those are out of state, and I mailed those out of state. We haven't got those yet. And there's a couple more that we just haven't been able to catch home. But we have 35 out of 43.
You tell me their names, and I'll make sure they're home. I will. I mean, that's, it looks like, you know, if we don't help, we ain't going to get nothing done. And we need water for winter time, that's all they are.
The 80% is what you need to bid, and then you have to have 100% by, before you can actually sign the contracts and stuff. But like I said, by the end of next week, we'll have the 80%, so...
See, back in 20, in 2009, we, water, water was ready to go. Then it went to 11, then it went to 10, then 10 left. Now, I got a book out there, a thing with all that in there, and it's when all the, everything was signed and everything to go, then it suddenly quit, and it went, it went to 9, down to 911 Center, and then out, Rick and Zelker. In order with this little...
The only project I've been working on is the Lower Mud River project.
Well, your name's signed on that.
Not only alcohol project. I had nothing to do with that.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about Griffithsville and all that.
No.
I'll show it to you.
It was typo, because I had nothing to do with it.
No, it's not either.
I, I had nothing to do with that project.
Because your, your name's on there, you're engineer, I got it all out there on the card.
Well, I, the only project that we're, the only two water projects we're doing for Lincoln PSD is the Lower Mud Project, Phases 1 and Phase 2.
Wow. Why are you working on Phase 2 when you haven't even got Phase 1 yet?
Because first, you have to get the funding, then you have to design it and get a rating, and then you build...
Funding's already gone for Phase 1.
Exactly. But we also have to get the funding for Phase 2, so that it can be built in another year.
Before you start Phase 1?
You have to keep everything moving on all the projects. That doesn't stop or slow down Phase 1 at all to proceed with trying to get the funding on Phase 2. It's two completely separate processes.
You know, it was, it was, it was going to get, it was going to start in March. Then it was, then it was going to go to, to June, June or July. Now it's still going. And now it'd probably be next year before we get it. We got to have water. We should have had water a long time ago down Lower Mud River, way back, and there's people dead and gone that was sitting there waiting for water. And these papers I got showed we should done had water down Lower Mud River. It's a book about this thick with all these letters, and they've been, the dates been changed from like 2/13 to 10th, it's took to April the 18th, uh, 17th, where they went back and redated it. All the stuff was in and everything.
I believe April, that was about the date it was filed with the PSD, was April 13th, 17th.
McCann and Dr. Vance's name is, is on a lot of them.
Can I ask you something?
Yes, yes.
This is the first project that I've been, you know, since the beginning on. Before that, you said we sent to the Public Service Commission in April.
Yes.
Did you not, I thought Kathy said last time that you had to have the easements and user agreements before you could send it up there.
We had to have the user agreements. We had to have 80% signups. Now, we sent it in with like 78% signups, but they didn't question that.
This is my thing, and I, and I understand their frustration, because, you know, this fall, you said February, March, it would be out to bid, and here we are. And I know that the HUD thing held it up. I mean, the HUD thing was an issue.
There's not no issue in that.
But, you know, it looks like these easements and user agreements and deposits and everything would have been together, you know, while we've been late on this HUD thing there. You know what I mean? What, what if this HUD thing hadn't happened? And that hadn't held it up?
Well, the, the Public Service Commission would have been the funnel then, so to speak, the bottleneck, is getting the Public Service Commission approval. But keep in mind that we had the devil's own trouble getting 80% user agreement signed. We actually have all but one of the structures on Lower Mud River either saying, either sign the user agreement or a declination statement.
Okay, so you, you have that enough, you feel like it's satisfied the public?
They have a question, the 78%. We actually have a couple more now. We have 79% now.
Okay, but that's $100 deposit.
Yes.
That has to be, you have to have that before you can bid it out, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Before it goes up to bid.
Yes, ma'am.
So how long, is it 90 days typically, once the Public Service gets up before, is that a...
The Public Service Commission is like four to six months, but it was filed in April, and then about a month later, they filed what they call an administrative order which sets the schedule, and that order set the, give the ALJ, the Administrative Law Judge, a deadline of August 31st to have his order issued. Not to say he can't do it before then, but...
Okay, so if that comes, say it does go all the way to the end of August. At that point, it can go out to bid, but you have to have this money, everybody's deposits, the 80% of the people.
Right.
And you have to have the easements, 100% of the easements.
No, we have to have 80% of the easements, which we'll have by the end of next week.
But if somebody don't go down there and get them, they ain't going to get them. I know it's not going to have that many. You know, how, if y'all, if, how come they told us this might start in March when they didn't even have nothing? Why did they tell us that? Just like that man sat over there, and every time I'd asked about that flood permit thing, "Well, I'm going to handle it," and Rick touched us capito. Well, it, it was just a front, because that man never did that, and he wasn't going to do it. And it, and, and I was the one called. I called, I called everybody I could think of. And, and that evening, Capito, that guy from Shelby Capito's office called me and said it had been waived. And then Mary called me and said that too.
But in answer to your question, we've been working on the user agreements for several months and the easements for like the last four months. We are trying to get everything lined up to where as soon as we get to Public Service Commission, we can immediately proceed, and we're on schedule to do that.
After the August 31st, does that mean it could 90 days go out to bid?
Uh, there's a 30-day bid period, and then you have up to 90 days to order and sign contracts.
So you're talking about January.
Why you gotta wait 90 days?
Up to 90 days, that's just what the contract says.
And I'm sure it'll go that 90 days.
Uh, depends on the funding agencies with that, but, I mean, it could...
What are you talking about funding? I thought it was already funded.
But they have to agree that, they have to approve various steps along the way. The county doesn't have $4.5 million in the bank, the funding agencies still have.
That paper that I got, there's a lot of those being done, except there's one that says the, the water, I don't know if it's up at Alcohol or where, Allen Creek or wherever it's at, but that, one of them's not in yet, is I know of. The letters, it shows letters in there and everything. I'm sure y'all familiar with that. It was in a handbook, and you've had this here where you can get it off the internet with all that, all that information in it. I can go get it and show it to you.
Unless you're talking about the Public Service Commission, I'm not sure what you're talking about.
It's about that thick. Do you know what we're talking about? I mean, I can go get that.
You can get on the Public Service Commission website and look at the orders and stuff.
No, my son got it all, all printed up, and made a book out of it.
We have all the permits in hand with the, you know, the Public Service Commission, if you consider that to be a permit, still pending, but Health Department, Highway Department, Public Land Corporation, Corps of Engineers, all of those are in hand.
I guess, are you working with the PSD to make sure, or to keep track of these deposits and where you are, in the county you are, to make sure?
We, we got the, the user agreement signed. The PSD is working to collect the, the $100. It didn't seem appropriate for a non-PSD personnel to handle their money, so we sort of split those dudes up.
We have a separate fund set up that all of that money would be deposited into. If they're handling it, we're writing them a receipt for, out of this specific receipt book for this project. And then if they're mailing it in, we're keeping a copy of their letter with their payment to keep track of how many they paid the deposit.
So I guess you took the easements to get this list of who to send the letters to, and what's going to be for...
Rick provided me with a, a list of people, and then he also sent me the user agreements.
People sent them back in, are you hearing some?
Yes. I want to say today, we have a total of 10 people that have actually sent in their money. Like you said, there was a couple that have not received letters, and I, I sent, I sent out all at the same time, so some people have gotten there, some people haven't, but if they call me, I'm more than happy to, to send them another letter. And anyone that, we set a deadline for the letters. Anyone that has not sent in after that deadline, we're going to physically go to their homes and, and make sure that we've made contact with them.
I know that was an Eschow alcohol, and I bet you know, money collected, took a long time.
I've been deemed the person to go to their homes once the deadline's up. And a lot of it's been neighbor referral, like if somebody's, "Oh, well, my neighbor got their letter, but I didn't, what is it?"
Right here, talking about, it's got everything in. It's got everything, see how they've been, how they've been to see, all this stuff.
Yes, both of them.
All, but, look here, all over and all, everything. And a lot of these, as you know, old, old nine, they've all been, standing out the six... And a lot of these, as you know, old, old nine, they've all been stamped now to six, to, uh, here. Is all them things been got in there, isn't it?
Well, yeah, that's what this means, they all been in there.
This one, this one, one here, one of these does not come in, it says that, that this right here.
Well...
See, and these is all the, all the letters and things from, that is, they goes, these right here, and, and one of them's not in there. And there's things in here that is, what starts with O nine and goes on over, and that, y'all, what they've done, it's been stamped, uh, April the eighteenth, twenty seventeen.
Well, that's when it was filed, it was received by the new.
This right here, no, look, they, some of them's got those, but I'll show you. Some of them were, were way down, right go.
See, this stamp here is the PSC stamp.
Yeah, and that's, a lot of these, these old ones in here, when our water was supposed to start.
This, this is the PSC stamp, that's, that's when it was filed with the Public Service Commission.
Okay, yeah, but it, a lot of these were filed way back yonder, and they've been, and they've been, uh, put over top of them. They've been put, see, looky here, February the twenty-fifth of ten.
Well, that's the, that's when the engineering was signed.
No, and they've been, looky here, DC number eighteen of two O nine, now look at this. Lower Mud River Water Project, E.L. Robertson engineer, and there's some over here at these where you signed them and everything.
Well, she's looking at the five G procurement, office, documentation.
That's what was in the paper, not very long ago, in the newspaper, and when you go get right there.
But all those documents are filed, and it's part of the Public Service Commission filing, and that was filed on April the eighteenth. Some of those documents, like you say, date clear back to two thousand and nine.
That's right, they go way back, and they've updated them, the thing, and stuck right up here, and stuck this, the eighteenth of, on.
They, they didn't really update, or that's just when it was filed.
Well, it showed on them, all these things that was filed. And it's, he goes and shows our water where it's been signed, but y'all weren't supposed to go, and then it stopped and goes down to these.
One, one last thing.
Down to the nine-one long center, and that's the end of it.
In order to get the pressure regulating pit site on the Lincoln EPA property, the County Commission is somehow involved in that property. And not being a lawyer, I don't quite understand it, but the lawyer has included in the deed for that site, County Commission approval. I have a copy of that deed here, if, if you can process it tonight, it's not.
I, I think that, if I'm not mistaken, that's, I think we allow the EPA to do that type of stuff. I mean, when they start developing that down there, I'm not really sure, and I, I had a talk to Larry about it, about it, but, uh, I think that has to go through the EPA.
Well, EPA is, owns the property, but somehow it was funneled through the County Commission way back when or something. It's, it's lawyer's stuff over my head.
The County Commission had to get the stuff out, and then it's...
And before we could get certain fundings done through...
Right, and, and apparently he thinks in order to be a hundred percent safe, if he could get you all to also approve the transfer, then he is more comfortable with the...
You can, we can let the prosecutor look at it, I have no problem, we have no problem doing it, but we want, you know, have the prosecutor look at the document.
I understand.
Is that for the piece of property for the pump station, or the, or whatever it is?
Pressure reducing.
Yeah, that's already been surveyed down there on the site, it's marked off, it's just a real tiny piece of property.
Well, that's actually the second site, uh, the first site, I guess, ended up, here's a map showing the EPC. He didn't seem to think that you needed to sign off on the easements, just the actual transfer of property.
We're gonna have a special meeting on the twenty-fourth, is that right?
Yeah. We can do that, we can do that. I, I would rather, you know, any kind of legal document, I just wanna make sure that we can look at and make sure it was proper.
Ron Flora and Rastadak, if he has any issues with it, he will be ahead probably to get a hold of Mr. Flora, I'm helping. I'm not a lawyer, I could be the middleman, but I want that something out.
Well, this, this also, we, we have to have the EPA sign.
Right, they have a meeting next week, they, they already approved, if they just have to sign.
Okay, well, we'll get, is this, you wanna leave this with us or?
I can.
Okay, why don't we have, uh, Jackie or the prosecutor?
Oh, no, I'm at, we're now on, we're at the right here.
Meet him, look at it prior to the, or next week, and then we'll see.
We have a, where it's, like, uh...
For the twenty-fourth, we'll talk about that next month, yeah, okay.
And Mary, if you could let me know, 'cause I'll need to bring the same one to the EPA sign, so that we have one to click on.
Okay. So really, if you have any changes, we need to know before that?
Well, I guess yes.
It's a good time, right?
Sure.
Next two things, is that right?
Yeah, that one, we can just let the EPA know that we've had the prosecutor look at it.
Okay.
Anyone else have any questions for Rick? If not, we'll go ahead to Rick Dowd regarding Camp Lakeview.
Let me give you some updates, I've been here a while. Most of it's about Camp Lakeview, Joe, a couple of the things. About a month ago, a gentleman from the EPA in Washington sent me an email, they're doing some sort of a report about the original project, which goes back to, uh, the two thousand and three federal appropriations bill. This is almost going back as far as the first. But it's not a problem at all. He, uh, we have, um, on the county website, there is a special little thing about the project, the green waste water project that he was able to access. But he asked if I would just sort of do some final thoughts about it, so that's what this is. It's not, it's not anything, I don't think, that'd be any weapon problem, okay? And I guess the, the key things that I thought, I went through it. One was that the federal monies really drove what happened there from that. If we hadn't have gotten that initial federal grant, we wouldn't have gotten money from the ARRA, or the state green wastewater project. So the original one point three million accessed another two point eight million. So that was a pretty significant type of thing, I, I thought for the county. And the other thing that I thought was significant was how we did so many, uh, samplings. We did over four hundred discharge sampling from the systems. And what we learned from those things helped change the technology that we use, the companies we did, how they make this. So that was pretty important, too. Uh, I wish that we could have continued because public water is coming in that area. And I think we would have learned a lot about how public water impacts those systems versus groundwater. But there's no point in doing that, so unfortunately, that information is not going. And Lewis, I talked to them about the June flood, the two thousand and sixteen flood, and the fact that, you know, that is unresolved. And the final thing that's in there is the pH issue. Remember that the state has these parameters now that they ask within the five-year period when you get your, um, permit, you have to measure for these parameters and they have to pass. Well, what we found when we started measuring was that the pH parameter didn't pass. And eventually, the reason was because our friends at Board Namoma and Anua, no discourages against the Irish. They sold us systems that didn't meet the federal guidelines. So we ended up with, what was it, seventy, forty-one percent of those systems in the project failed to meet the federal requirements. But we're not, it's just not Lincoln County, they're all over the state. So my guess is that the EPA and the EPC are just gonna not do anything valid. I don't see, I don't know if they could do it.
The Jakes, the Jakes talked to anybody when you were, I mean, I know you wrote this, but, but did you actually speak to them about the Jakes watering and the situation that it's up behind over there to get anything back?
I just sent them a report.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you know, as far as the acidity of that, you know, if you go, you know, I don't know what, if we measured the pH of the streams themselves, it's a...
We talked about doing it, but the feeling was that it might let Anua off the hook if we couldn't show any difference in the treatment.
Did you know how much, how much it's resolved, acid rain, or some kind of things like that, so, I don't, you know. The fact that we reduced, uh, California coalite counts significantly should, you know, to me, was enough to do the, do the work.
Yes.
Because, you know, those are the ones that, when we look at the morbidity associated with those type things, that's where we really had to hit it. That's, that's, you know, including, including that Mud River, like, you know. I mean, one of the things we, we wanna do is make sure that, that, well, it's one of the coalite, coal form versus, versus animals versus children, and things like that. And pH is a, is a whole different ballgame if you look at it. You can also look at it versus how long it's in the sun, versus how long it's in the shade, you know, just the width of the stream that's involved in runoff and things like that, so. I, I mean, I, I wish we could have done it too, but I think those are kind of things that were above and beyond what we could do. So try to come out with that. But we know for a fact from our results of our testing that we significantly lowered those pathogens that were in that water. And, and that was the whole initial purpose, was to drive those.
Right, that was the driver.
And I don't know, we haven't, uh, it'd be interesting to see what their, I haven't heard of it, you know, what their California coalite counties, like, really test that.
Well, we tested where we swim.
Yeah.
And it's, it, in like, uh, I'm gonna guess maybe in ten years, we've had, I think I'm saying this right, three times out of fifty-some where it's been above the expected. I mean, we started testing before the project happened, so, yeah, it's, yeah, no, we, we've tested, we've tested it four times this season, and it's been fine. Um, I can't remember when we did this, but we, um, worked on this project with the hub to get some funding to promote the Guyan dot, what was happening on the Guyan dot river. There's some.
Do you want us to just, we need to run it?
Sure, that'd be great. So this was one of the things that we used the funding for, to make this raft card. Uh, it's in all the rest stops in the state of West Virginia, the interstate stops, so hopefully it'll bring...
My clinic side too, so.
It'll, it'll...
Brave Roberts make sure to make it.
It'll bring some people into West Virginia. Uh, the other thing that we've done with the money that I think is pretty important is we worked with the, what is it called? Uh, the Coalfields Regional Economic Development Office and helped fund a project that was signed, both on the highway and in the river. So when you're in the river and your kids are saying, how much longer, the sign will say, five miles before you get there, so.
They're nicely designed.
Yes, we had, we had a professional.
Oh, really?
A person who works for the EPA.
Oh, okay.
Who did it for... Okay, yes.
So now we know who it is.
Well, it was, it was, it was very helpful. Okay, let's ju, let's, let's finally go to what I'm on the agenda about, which is Camp Lakeview. I wanted to give you an update. And one of the things that, uh, we did, which we've done for a number of years now, is we do an end of the school year Environmental Awareness Day, where we bring different elementary school groups out for the whole day, right at the end of the school year. And this is just a little chart that shows you what schools came and what the activities were that we did. Um, uh, we had, um, seven days that we did these for, uh, and we had almost three hundred and seventy people, ten pool of adults attending. So it was pretty successful. Um, the morning is educational, and then the afternoon, we do swimming and kayaking and canoeing, which is educational too, but it doesn't need as many of the content standard objectives that the, that the board of education would like us to need. Okay, uh, and here is, we're in the middle, in the middle of summer, and we're doing three Wednesdays. And at this point, we've done five of them, we have four left, we, we're about halfway, well, we're just past the halfway point. You can see, uh, what we've had last year for the whole summer, our total was four hundred and seventy-nine. So I'm expecting that we're gonna have a whole lot more, so it's been a very, so far it's been very successful, lots of people coming out. I think Facebook and, you know, all the media stuff, the stuff that the newspaper is putting has helped us get the word out. And now people are coming every time, bringing their kids. Uh, we are having some success with, with children riding the tri-rover bus, not as much as I'd like. I'm not sure what the answer is. I think part of it might be that it's, the bus is picking kids up, you know, nine-thirty in the morning. It may just be early for some families to get to the bus stop, I don't know. But I think it's a, I think it's really important to try to reach out to those kids who don't have any transportation to get out there.
I saw some standing Wednesday with their child.
Yes, yeah.
Somebody was riding.
Yeah, somebody is riding. We've had, we've had four buses, we've had thirteen twice, but we've also had three. That's where I'm at. Um, okay, I wanted to talk about a couple more things. I'm looking for, I hope, the commission can give some advice and some leadership about what, you know, how to make all the stuff that goes on that you can't continue in this age of limited funding. And there are a couple things that are going on. And one is, last year, you all approved this idea of, of a supervisory training. That was a hope that we would get somebody to teach them the ropes and they would take it all around. The person didn't work that at all, it was, it was too bad. Uh, and this year, we don't have anybody in training. So that's sort of a piece of the puzzle. The other thing that's gonna happen, I'm not sure exactly when, is that our caretakers are building their own home. So they're eventually gonna move away from that site, we're gonna have to get some new people. And, you know, hopefully we can find folks who will be able to do the maintenance, do the mowing, all those kinds of things, and really will be encompassed of it. That's kind of the critical part. Another thing that's gonna be important is that I bought a house in Charleston with my friend Barbara. And eventually, I'm not sure exactly when, it's gonna be really ready, but I will move in there. And the amount of time I'll spend in Lincoln is gonna be less, even though I'm not over there every day, but it's gonna, it's gonna be less. And my, some of my physical abilities are declining as I get older.
I've seen pictures on Facebook, I don't believe that one.
It's pulled up on paper this week, yeah.
Yeah, no, I don't believe it.
So...
I've seen you stand down the water.
Yes, you are, I wouldn't have minded, but my daughter, yeah.
Yeah.
Fortunately, you didn't give me the picture, the picture of me carrying a canoe, so that would have been... Um, so I'm just not sure how to, I want, you know, I wanna make sure this continues, but I haven't found anybody yet who wants to jump in and, and do this. I'm not sure, we do have a Camp Lakeview Development Authority, the transmission is pointing to people too. It's like several of our authorities, you know, people want to show up to meet, and it's, and... Ideally, it'd be great to find somebody who would be really interested, who would do this as a volunteer, but, you know, that may not happen. But even if we couldn't, you know, there might, I mean, my hope has always been that there might be a school teacher, be like a part-time job in the summer who could do this. We haven't found one yet, I've talked to the board education about looking for somebody. And I've also talked to the board about them taking over the responsibility for this. And I've also talked to the Board about them taking over the responsibility for this.
What time was it? Is, could somebody that was, that took over the caretaking duties, could they help with that too? Could that be worked into the deal?
They might. I mean, be one more respons, what's happening now is both John and Holly work.
Yes.
So, they're not there.
She, she didn't use to.
She didn't want.
Yeah, so she got that on.
So, she helped that. So, I'm getting out there, you know. So, yeah, we could find the right, we could find the right people. But it's, I just wanted to get that on the radar because, I mean, we're, we're gonna get through August.
You really need somebody there this summer with you though to kind of save.
Well, I, I mean, I'd certainly be willing to do another summer, you know, to train and train some people. It's something I really, I'd really like doing. It gives me a lot of satisfaction to see these kids learn how to kayak and canoe. This is great. It's like, wow.
Are you still teaching at the Tarburg?
No, I haven't done that in a hundred years.
Since you taught me at four ages.
That was a long time ago. It's a long time.
That's when they had Polaroids.
Box camera.
No, we've had a darkroom set up back there. He watched that.
Wow. So, anyhow, I will keep updating you on stuff. I'll also, we'll also have some financial stuff from Camp. The thing this year is our, we're spending more money because we've gotta hire more people because we've got more votes out. I mean, two of us can't do it safely. So, there's more money going out and that kind of stuff. But we have enough money in the fund at this point. So, that's not the big issue. Big issue is sort of ongoing.
More female parts of the reaction would be interested.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Rick.
Okay.
Next on the agenda, Commissioner, I received a letter, I talked with and received a letter from Ms. Sandra Atkins who lives in Hubble. She has a problem with, what she feels is that, uh, the county right of way has been blocked over there between the houses and I get, and I, and I have the information available. But what I was gonna do is ask the Commission if they give me permission to send a letter to the Department of Highways and to the prosecutor, asking them to look into the information that she's given us because, uh, I guess someone's built a chicken coop over there and blocked the whole right of way going down between. Uh, it's been a right of way for years and years and years over there. And I guess it's a subdivision type thing. So, but if I can, uh, if it's okay with the Commission, I'll go ahead and send a letter and ask the prosecutor to look into it as well as the D L H to go back to.
Do you want me to make a mention?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I'll make a mention. I want you to write a letter to the prosecutor in the front row.
All right, I'll second that. I'll close.
All right.
Um, next on the agenda is that, uh, we have, uh, one of our P S D members over at the Lincoln P S D has a term expiring. When does it expire? Is it?
Actually, it's our June thirtieth.
June thirtieth.
We didn't.
We have spoken to at least one of the other, the other P S D members over there who would like to see Mr. Tully reappointed to that. Uh, it would be, I mean, and I had no problem. I think they're doing a good job over there and I think probably the other, the other P S D member over there is in support of it too. But what I'd like to do is ask the Commission if we want to go ahead and, uh, put this on our website, advertise in the position. And then when we meet, uh, at the, our regular meeting in the first of the month, go ahead and, uh, and fill, fill the position in. But I think, uh, it's, you know, it's, it's my opinion, looking at the job they're doing over there, that it's a lot better than the job that Los Meigs done. I think those people that are working, doing that job ought to have some input into who they're working with. So, uh, but I do think that we ought to, to go ahead and identify the public that we are looking to build that position because we, and, and one of the things it might do is allow us to identify people that might be willing to help with this position or other positions.
All right, I'll make a nice little condition.
I'll second that. Oh, yes. Next on the agenda is the excise tax increase. Mary, do you wanna go over that?
Yes, I talked to the auditor's office and we have to advertise for not less than thirty days nor more than sixty days prior to the meeting in which you would vote to increase that. So, if we go all through tonight to advertise for that, then we would have to do it on a September meeting and which they said most counties are doing it September first, or, you know, they're hitting for the first of September.
So, what, what are you doing? Just put out a notice?
Yes, it's just a, um, legal, to, the intent to increase the tax must be published at least as a class one legal ad, not less than thirty days nor more than sixty days prior to the meeting that the increase will be considered. You don't have to have any additional hearings or, or required. Um, you just have to have a county commission meeting open to the public and it has to be approved by a majority by the county commission.
So, do I have a motion to go ahead and advertise that in the paper?
I'll submit.
Okay, I'll second that.
Please say aye.
So, just get it, y'all get it to Sean in the thirty days, minimum thirty days?
Yeah, not less than thirty days nor more than sixty days prior to the first of September.
Yes.
We have no, all around finished business.
I'd like to say something. I would like to say, why, there's a few people don't, why don't it matter about them to have clean water than it does two thousand people? And Dr. Vance, you know that this project down Lower Mud River in two oh nine, 'cause I have the papers, it's right in that book. And your name's in there, McCann's name's in there. And it went on and on and everybody, and all that stuff is old and it's been stamped up on top of it now, you know, April now. And, and why? How come that the water, like y'all went down, then it starts and, and it goes down to the nine-one-one center down there that way? Then it comes back and goes out in Rippittsville and all that way. And then it goes up Mud River. Now, why, why is all these put before us while we got water down there?
I don't, uh, I don't agree with what you're saying, first of all. Not that I think that you're wrong or I'm wrong or anything. But, you know, we have always, at least while I've been on the commission, I'm sure the other commissioners would say the same thing, that we have, we have tried to stick with the county life project that we developed in, in, not after two thousand, I think it was, which was a ten-year project and we're seventeen years into the thing. Uh, when, one of the things I think you're looking at, and I, I don't know about those particular documents because I really haven't looked at those.
Y'all put them off the internet, didn't you?
Well, what I'm saying is though, when we applied for small cities block grants, there may have been two or three different projects that applied for small cities block grants in the county.
But Dr. Vance, the papers are signed. It shows the engineers got the.
Right, and as you go through those different steps, Barbara.
We, if y'all just go through this book and look, you'd see all that stuff there.
Well, and, and you know, and I, I know, having been here for sixteen years, how that went. I mean, I don't, and, and, you know, I know that the Route thirty-four, I mean, Route three project was monies that they come up in addition to, so it wasn't a small, a small city's block grant. Uh, and, and that, I don't know exactly what the funding source was for, but I know that that project going over to there, uh, wasn't a small city's block grant.
And that book, it shows it was God.
And some of the information, I know you brought up before, where, uh, Ray Hall come in with the monies for, um, architecture and design. It's when he was over to high school, when he, he came in over there for, with those monies. And all those chunks of money have to be gotten and, and used to get to the next step to get more money. And some of the documentation that you brought up, if I'm not mistaken, was when those particular parts were approved. And.
That all adds up though.
Well, and, and I could tell you, there's no, I could, you know, get up on the courthouse and run around and ask for money, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't make this project go by faster than what we're trying to do right now.
Yeah, but there's water projects got money to go and we were still left behind and, you know?
Well, that's what I'm saying. It's just like the projects Rick worked on during this period of time that were on the Big Heart Street project that come out of Logan County. Uh, that had to come through Logan County because Logan P S D's the one that supplied that, uh, the water for that things. And they applied for the grant and we wound up getting some houses in Logan, in Lincoln County taken care of because it was part of that project.
I read all about that.
But, you know, I'm from Laurel Hill District, original Laurel Hill District, and we have not, since I've been on the commission, we've not had a small cities block grant over there in, in, in the district out front. Now, we did go to the A R C, uh, with the help of Governor Manchin at the time and get a one and a half million dollar grant for the Ten Mile Project. And then we got, uh, a loan, a zero percent loan for the rest of it. And then the Route thirty-seven project was through R U S and some other things. I'm not really sure exactly how that was funded. But I, I can tell you, you know, if, if, if I could give everybody water tomorrow, I would. And I under, I understand your question.
You know what I'm talking about. We should have done had water down.
Oh, I, I did, I agree.
We should have done had water down for a lot of these water projects. But you know what? It seems like you have to know a politician or you have to contact this one, you have to contact that one. They have to do you a favor. And then when, when somebody does get some water here, they're all lined up with their picture took. And, and people, lots of them people, you never seen them before till they get their picture took.
Right, right. I, I, I know what you're saying. And, and you know, one of the things about asking the different politicians for things is that sometimes you get it, sometimes you don't. Sometimes they can affect positive change, sometimes they can't. And we've run against that multiple times over the last sixteen years. I mean, I, I know, I mean, we've, on multiple projects, we've run into the same thing. But on the other flip side of that is, when you have what happened at Phil, in Philadelphia with HUD, HUD requiring a waiver on, on the direct core, the direct drilling and things like that.
Y'all wasn't even saying about it. That man was over there saying, "Oh, I'm going, I'm going for three meetings" and he never went nowhere.
But, but, but I could tell you personally, you know, in, in talking with Congressman Jenkins and, and his people and Senator Capito and Senator Manchin, that.
I tried all them people. I got letters from all these people and all this, "Want you to tell them what you want." They don't do nothing else but send you something and want you to vote for them and all this. I got all this stuff.
I know how you feel about that. But the point I was trying to get to is, somebody affected the HUD's decision to not require a waiver. And that, I feel, was done politically.
Listen, I went, I called all these offices. I called Manson's office. I called all these, I called Shelley Capito's office. Nobody would call me back and say, "Oh, they can't do it." So, I called Attorney General's office. And I told that woman what I wanted. And I told them about that because, you know, you had a paper all about and it was in a piece that is in a paper. Then I realized what we had to have. And then I, and she said, "Well," I said, "We don't do that. We don't, he don't have nothing to do that." I said, "Well, let me tell you something. We done a favor for him, voted for him. I'm sure he knows people that can do a favor for him." And it wasn't for just about four hours, so that guy from Shelley Capito's office called me and said he didn't wait.
Well, but I, I agree in what Attorney General's office told you, because they didn't have anything to do with it. I mean, they don't, they don't, they don't have anything to do with.
Well, they, I, well, I, they, it wasn't.
Now, they may have known somebody.
That was the same day. I'm sure they knew somebody. I'm sure they did.
You know, I could, you know, I talked to Senator Manchin on Friday prior to the, getting notified by Senator Capito's office on Tuesday, that they said we didn't have to have the waiver. And, and, you know, and a lot of times, just like when you talked to a lot of them, I talked to a lot of them too. You know, sometimes you get results, sometimes you don't. That's just with the, the fact of life.
Well, I sure can try pretty hard. I tell you.
Oh, we know, we know. And, you know, and I appreciate the fact, Barbara, that the problem you have down on Lower Mud. And I think we've addressed that problem. Now, we didn't address it quick enough.
We got dangerous water down there. I mean, all you do is flush it. I brought all this stuff over here. How would y'all like to bathe in stuff like that? And put the water places where they got the need water softeners and they say, "Oh, my water's fine." It's just like, it's like this is gonna go up, from what I understand, it's going up about three houses at Buffalo, the phase one. Am I right?
I don't know what the art, the design of it is.
But them people, they all got big water softeners and they, they never come over here. They've never been over. They've never done nothing. But they got, they, but they still might get water. People, there's people down there.
When we put water into places, people that need water get it, but also people that may not need it as much. You know, I've got eight or nine different haulers over on my side of the county that really need water too. And I have to explain to them why we're doing phase one Mud River, phase two Mud River, instead of doing phase one Mud River, they come over and do another one. And the reason being is you guys have waited so long. You all have waited and, and.
All of years.
And we have, but right now, we have the funding. I mean, you know, it's just a matter of going through what the law requires.
Not what they're supposed to do. If they get busy, maybe we get it for another year.
Well, hopefully they'll get busy. I mean, I.
You don't want though, there's no sense in us having to go through until next year to get this water. Now, there is no, there, we can't wait that long.
And I was talking to one of my patients today and they were telling me there's no way they can wait three years to get it.
We've been waiting twenty years.
Well, they've been waiting twenty-three years before they'll get that.
I could probably have you a little more. Them people have been dead twenty and twenty-five years that wanted water down there. You know what? When I married Swed, but you know what we done? We pulled water like this out of the wells. That's what we did. And finally, we drilled a well and had it about ten years and then the gas got in it. That's what's the matter with it. It's got sulfur, it's got gas, and the salt is so bad, it's unusable and it adds, everything, it, everything falls off in the houses, pickets, everything. I brought that Evan Jenkins, this guy that Michael, he come to my house and stayed three hours and he seen how everything was. So, I had water down there.
What I can tell you, all the monies there, if we can get the money to get to work quicker, we would do that.
Well, that, there's, that woman that was here, she said she might can make that go quicker, that it probably can go quicker. And it needs to go quicker because you know ain't nobody gonna start water in the winter time down Lower Mud River. Well, I tell you, those, there are people that's getting sick from their water down there. There's a lot of disease down there now, of people.
You know, there's, you know, there's.
My daughter-in-law next door used to have her water. She has got lymphoma in here. And now they're going to go in there and do it. They done done two operations. Now she's going to have her bone cut down the trometer. I, back in soccer, where that muscle, that lymphoma messed her up. And I've had lymphoma. And we're not a blood can at all. The water is dirty, it's nasty, and everyone needs water and we need it now.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and do business. Have you had a chance to do business? If, if, are there any changes that you see? Not a high as for motion for new business, as you're saying. And I'll second that. Please say aye. Before we go, uh, well, in open discussion, would you wanna go ahead and talk about the?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that, uh, we got contacted by the state today in reference to the October seventh road bond election. They let me know that the state would not, because state code only allows for early voting sites, uh, one site of early voting, that they're not gonna, uh, field the satellite, not gonna reimburse us for any satellite locations. So, there's only gonna be, we're only gonna have that one location, given how many is right now. So, if we can't get reimbursed, we're only gonna have one. But, yeah, we here in hand, well, that's, that's what we have down at the rural early voting site, the, the, or, or classified as satellite protection department.
Are we far enough along to move it into the church or is that gonna have to wait till spring? Or, or they spring?
No, I mean, we're, this is a, this is not an emergency cha, a precinct change.
I need to complete movement, do early voting in the annex instead of the garage?
It's provided that we go ahead, that this time we can run it, the next, the next paper is what we have to run then. And then, uh, you guys have to officially adopt it in the August meeting, the first meeting in August.
But you could still move it to the church.
I mean, is the church physically ready to have it there? I guess that's my, I mean, the wiring is, or the area?
Which will be paper ballot this, this election. Also, they're, they're just gonna paper, paper ballot, which they, is, it's not, so it won't be used by, by machines. But, but, but what do you pay for ballot, this, this election, it's also, they're, they're just gonna pay for paper ballots, like, it's, it's not, so we won't be using the I B O machines.
I would like to try to have it there, just to see how it goes.
Well, all, I mean, it'd just be a matter of, of getting, getting some double locks and, and picking a room. I'm not real sure about the handicap accessibility, that'd be the, about the one thing that I don't know.
There's a ramp on the side that goes in, it's not leveling, and that leveler, you gotta go down another ramp or something to get inside.
Yeah, the ramp on the outside takes you to the sanctuary floor, the second floor. But there's no, any way on the ground, there's always a few steps, there's two steps up, two steps down, there's nothing to get you, unless you use the sanctuary.
We have to determine that for, if you wanna do it there permanently anyway, so that may be something.
I know there's some monies available to get grants, to make, and make a handicap accessible. The Secretary of State's office, I can find out about those, that may not be available for this road bond election, but maybe we can get something going for, you know, the primary.
Yeah.
Why don't you do that check on that for us, and then, now we can go ahead and start looking to get numbers as far as what it would take to make that place available, just for the, if we could do it for the bond, and if not, then we could have it ready for the spring after.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the notice has to, has to be sent to the paper, well, actually, has, the notice has to be sent to the Secretary of State's office by the now, and then by August the seventh, just if you guys have to adopt it, you guys have to be, I think.
August third.
Third, so. I think all, the timeline's okay with, with making changes right now, if, if, if the building, if the building's available.
Well, let's do it in the meantime, between now, split on the agenda for that, for that meeting, and then we can look at, see if we wanna move on again, you know, and actually, financially afford to make it.
Well, the, the notice that we have to let people know, we have a notice that, that is what we need to know.
That's what I'm saying, we can make, we can make that decision, can't we, the first meeting in August.
No, we have to have the notice now.
We'd have, we'd have to post the notice now that we were gonna use it, and well, and, what, by Friday, have it in the paper by Friday, is, is that one?
Monday, Monday, Monday morning, but I was gonna work at Mary's one morning.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't know if we can get that, set that, we might just wanna shoot for the spring and get another.
Yeah.
Yes.
Like, that way we can make sure we got our voting machines in our place, and that's gonna have to happen anyway, so, we might wanna do that, just playing, seeing this is gonna be different than other elections, because it's just gonna be a paper ballot of that nature, so. And that shouldn't be that problem over there with that.
Yeah, it may, may be better to leave that, 'cause we have plenty of, the, the blocks.
We'll try to get some grants for the disability access and things like that.
Yeah, I'll talk to the, to the real rep up at the Secretary of State's office and see if they can give me some information on those handicap accessible grants.
Is there anything else I forgot, Mary?
Special session, July twenty-fourth, to approve this final state budget provision for general county.
Was there anything else we was putting on that?
Uh, bricks, bricks.
Bricks, bricks, yeah.
Yeah, no, we actually sent it the day, yeah.
Yeah, for those two things?
Yes.
So that'll be six P M. on August twenty-fourth, that's a Monday.
No, no, July twenty, yes, July twenty-fourth, it's a Monday, yes.
So, if, if you have anything else to say. Okay, I, I don't have anything else, I'll go ahead and ask for motion to adjourn to July twenty-fourth at six P M. And I'll second that, and stand adjourned, thank you.